Good evening. The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to our city council meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for the public comments, one at the beginning of meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards which are located on the table outside the main entrance where you entered and at the podium rail to my left. Please give your card to the city clerk. She's sitting right here in front of us in the middle. When I call upon you to speak, I ask that you limit your comments no more than three minutes and that we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the bad open meeting law?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we are.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have the opportunity before we start our meeting to have an invocation given by Reverend Gordon Clay Bailey of the Unitarian Universal Congregation of Las Vegas. Following that, we'll have the pledge allegiance led by our mayor pro tem, Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's so good to be with you this day, hear these words of invocation. Most holy and precious spirit, we come to you today in gratitude, thanks, and celebration, the gratitude for all the good things in our lives, the celebration for the anticipation of better things yet to come. Gracious God, spirit known by many names, this city has made its way and thrived, starting in 1945 and making it all the way to this day. We give thanks for the leadership that has sustained this community, for the hard-working members of the staff of this municipality and all of its residents who make this a wonderful place to live. Gracious Spirit, we pray for and are thankful that it is almost a celebratory time in this nation. We celebrate the good things that come during the typical season of Hanukkah and Christmas and solstice and Kwanzaa and so many other things. Grant us, O great Spirit, the wisdom to remember that we share a common home. Give us the courage so that our words and actions will reflect what is truly best for the common good. Remind us to be careful with the resources, especially water, in this desert community. Humble us so we may glean wisdom from across the ages, all people, all ages, all faiths. In closing, dear God, be with this leadership and all the residents of this city as we step forward into a new era of prosperity, kindness, and compassion. Amen.
Please remain standing for the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, thank you for coming down today. We appreciate you giving blessings to this council and to our whole city today.
Watching you all and friends.
All right. We've got the best guy there. Tonight, we have a presentation for the organization of the business of the month. Councilman Barone, I understand that you have some of them. Unfortunately, your representative wasn't able to be here. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Mayor, unfortunately, I was informed by the proprietor that he and like many other businesses, you know, they also have a person power crunch. But I was nominating the legendary Recreation World and Lawn Mower Shop right here in downtown North Las Vegas as the business of the month. I think Councilman Black said it best that as kids, that was the place that when we walked by, we could only, you know, but dream of the wonderful vehicles, motorcycles, minibikes, go-karts. And of course, I think they also sold lawnmowers, right? But and of course, as a riding mower, hey, that'd be a really great thing to have. But they've been a legendary business here in the downtown area for many years, and I think they're quite deserving of being a business of the month. They've been here for many decades. They counted up, they brought their business here. They stood by with the city and grew with it, and I think it's a high time that they are recognized. So eventually, I guess we'll probably bring them in to come and get a picture with us. But in the meantime, if they're out there listening, yes, our friends at Recreation World and Lawn Mower Shop are Rec World, definitely the deserving business of the month.
Scott, did you want to say something about? I knew you were excited about that one.
He said it all. I never purchased one thing there because I didn't have the money, but I drooled up when I was a kid, but I drooled over the go-karts and the minibikes and all the cool stuff that I never acquired.
Well, I could never do that.
That's right. I should get myself a minibike.
Anyway, we appreciate you. So what you're saying is this wonderful organization, we'll take a picture with them a little later and let them know that. So if you're out there, we're very happy to have you in our community. You bring a great service to our community, and we love supporting our local North Las Vegas businesses. So get well and have a happy Christmas. Moving on to council items, Councilman Barone.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. And by the way, I gotta say, I'm not sure if you were gonna announce this, but apparently we have a thing here where we're supposed to bring ugly sweaters. I don't think everyone got the memo. Of course, Mayor, you look very dapper and handsome, as does here the Italian Stallion, also known as Mayor Pro Tem Churchill. I don't have an ugly sweater. All I have are grandpa sweaters. My very good friend here, she, well, okay, she has a cool bird there, right? So I think it's a pink male carrying pigeon, right?
Yeah, he was our official carrier pigeon.
Fantastic, and in pink.
Yeah, of course.
Scott has the, I think he has the grandpa sweater going on, right?
Sweater named Ugly.
Sweater named Ugly.
Sweater named Ugly.
And of course, our good friend here, she does not, that is not an ugly sweater. To me, that's a very cool sweater. She's wearing the Grinch. Councilwoman, to me, it looks pretty cool. If you don't, if you don't ever want it, I know someone who will pick it up the trash.
I will gladly donate it.
Thank you very much, and I'll wear it. But I have to admit.
But don't give it to him now, please.
Yeah, I want to nominate as the winner of this our very city, our very own city manager. That sweater is so bad, it almost hurts over here.
You have to stand up and turn around and show.
Would you please, Mr. City Manager?
I told you, you should have put it on backwards.
That one was so bad, it was painful. And I know, of course, it is all in jest. He will get me later. Last Saturday, Mayor, I was able to attend a very special ceremony. There is a civic group out here called the Good Deeds Project, and last Saturday, I got to see them in action in Ward 1. They came across a family that has two of its young men, the two kids in the family, they're young men, who they're wheelchair-bound, they have a form of muscular dystrophy, and their little house here in the downtown area, it's just a humble home in our area, built in the 50s, of course, it's not set up for ADA. And this civic organization, they found out about this, and so they were able to allot them some sponsors, and in a 10-day period, they retrofitted the house with ramps on the front and with automatic doors, they widened the doorways, made them automatic doorways, made the whole house, including the kids' bathrooms, accessible, and then coated the whole thing with paint. Mayor, at this time of the year, you know, we're so, we're giving, I think this Good Deeds Project, they definitely gave the family something, very much something to be very hopeful for for the future, and I wanted to definitely salute our friends from the Good Deeds Project and to let them know that, again, they're angels out there in the community doing good work, most definitely. But also, this next week, December 22nd, our team at the Neighborhood Recreation Center was going to be sponsoring Breakfast with Santa. Now, the breakfast is from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Yes, I know, normally, I'm sure it'll be the morning somewhere on the planet, we're just calling it Breakfast with Santa. We'll be having a visit with Santa, there'll be live entertainment, arts and crafts, and I think there's still, there still might be time to register for that. But we have some friends from the community who are also going to be donating some gifts, and please join us. Thank you very much.
Mayor Pro Tem Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me remind everybody, I think I did a couple of weeks ago, that we will be having Breakfast with Santa at Skyview YMCA this Saturday, December 18th, and the breakfast will be at a proper time, 10:00 a.m. to noon. It won't be an evening breakfast, because we're on Pacific time here. We want everybody to come by and enjoy breakfast and photos with Santa and have some holiday cheer and do some crafts, and it's only $2 a person, simply because Santa has transitioned over to an electric means of transportation over here, so we reduced the cost there. So please come out. I think it's gonna be really, really fun. Today also was our Shop with a Cop Drive-Thru event at our Northeast Command Center, which is on Centennial, just a little bit, a little bit east of our YMCA. We used to have it before pre-pandemic times at Target, and I'm hoping that we could bring that back relatively soon. But once again, it doesn't seem like any type of issue stops our police department from doing some very, very good things for the children in our community. So I thank them from the bottom of my heart for taking their time to do this. Thirdly, I and Councilman Black had gotten an opportunity to fly to California this past Monday to look at some possible development projects here in our downtown area from very much overdue projects. I think the area in question, which I won't get into now, will be a definite plus to our city, and we're looking forward to giving you more information on that as the weeks, yes, the weeks, not the months, but the weeks go by. Lastly, let me just mention something. I want to take a moment to speak about some specific members of our community, and that's our little furry friends, our animals. You know, a recent report was aired on Channel 13 that was brought to us by Darcy Spears, and let me say that I've worked with Darcy in the past on many issues, actually going back to 2009, and I found her reporting to be very credible, and I took a trip down there myself. So let me just say that, first of all, I want to thank her for bringing the attention of all of us over here at the city and to the public as well. It highlighted some very troubling accusations regarding the Animal Foundation. The safety and well-being of our animals is a primary concern for myself and has always been and should be a primary concern and focus of the Animal Foundation as well. North Las Vegas is one of the three jurisdictions that contracts with the shelter, and the expectation is that the facility be clean and the animals be treated with care and compassion until they are adopted. I truly hope that is the case and will be the case in the future. I understand an independent investigation is underway, and I will be monitoring, monitoring this to ensure that as a community and a region, we are doing the very best for our little furry friends again, which in many, many cases are parts of our family, really close parts of our family. Along those lines, a couple of animal safety tips that I'd like to share with you right now, and if you could tell, it's kind of cold out there. So please be sure your pets are wearing the proper attire when you take them out for a walk. If you're wearing a jacket, you may want to consider your little cat or dog, if you walk your cat, having them wear a little jacket as well. Most importantly, please make sure that your pets are wearing a collar with your information, since many are, I've found to be kind of escape artists. If you leave them in the yard, they get out, and I notice a lot of items on Nextdoor wanting to know if they found their cat or their dog, and they put a picture in them, but unfortunately, many don't have a collar on and can't be tracked down. While not mandatory yet, please also have your pets microchipped. It's not a big expense, but it's something that stays with the pet no matter where he or she goes. Please also have your, let me go back on that. It's really the best way to ensure that they come home and are found. And finally, a friendly reminder, spay and neutering is important. It's not only important because it's required by law here in North Las Vegas, but it contributes to, if they're not spayed and neutered, it contributes to the overpopulation of these animals, since already so many are left on the street and have to be euthanized, and anything in the area of more than what is necessary is too much. Let me just, before I wish everybody a very happy holidays, as well as to our two-legged friends, I just want to bring out a fact to everybody over here. Together with Las Vegas and the county and ourselves here, we contribute $5 million to the Animal Foundation for what I mentioned a moment ago, proper treatment, proper housing, and proper care. The CEO of that Animal Foundation gets someplace in the area of $240,000 a year as a nonprofit, while many of the employees get between $8 and $10 an hour. So kind of keep that in your mind during this holiday season for those workers over there who clearly don't work there for the great amount of money that they get, but they work there because they have the love and concern of those animals at heart. And I just want to wish everybody here and watching a very safe holiday and a very happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, what are your, what are your solutions, since you want to bring that up?
Right now, I guess the best thing that we could do right now is what we're doing. We're reviewing the contract that we have with TAF. We have our attorneys looking at it. We're waiting for an audit coming in from Las Vegas that will be shared with us over here, so we could determine exactly what the violations are, have been, and to, let's just say, take the appropriate action. But let me be very candid with you and very honest. They've been doing a good job for us in the past. I'm not a big fan of outsourcing myself. I think when you outsource, you do it when needed, just to keep the operation going, but outsourcing doesn't take the responsibility away from the individual who's responsible for it. You still maintain the responsibility, but you lose control of the issue. So I would hope at some time in the future that we put our heads together over here and bring those animals back to North Las Vegas where I believe that they should be, because there is absolutely no shortage of love and compassion for us as a council over here, as well as the community at large. So I guess that's, I could only tell you that's where I feel they should be eventually, and I will definitely keep yourself, Mayor, and my council colleagues up to date on what we find out as time goes by. Thank you for that opportunity, though.
Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. I would just like to remind the listening audience about two events coming up this weekend that I'm excited about. The first one is on Friday, December 17th, from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Silver Mesa Rec Center. It's the Senior Christmas Ball, which will include live music, food, dancing, and lots of fun, and I'll be there enjoying that with the seniors in the North Las Vegas community, and also the next morning on December 18th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the same location, the Silver Mesa Rec Center, will be Breakfast with Santa, also with fun activities, live entertainment, and a visit with Santa. We heard the beautiful invocation from the pastor. He mentioned the precious resource of water. Just wanted to remind everyone, it's winter times upon us. Watering is one day per month, and you can determine your watering day visiting the city's website or snwa.org. Just wanted to remind you of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Collins Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. There's an organization called Cruising for Christmas, and their goal is to give back to the community in basically 89106 and 89030 area codes, and I know they kind of mirrored something that Chet Buchanan does. They spent the night, they didn't spend that many days outside collecting toys, but they spent the night at one organization, and I know Councilman Scott donated some bicycles this year, and I donated some skateboards because that was the request. And so just excited to announce that this Saturday at 9:00, they will be delivering toys to Joe Mackey Magnet School, and then at 11:00, they're going to roll on down to Quantum McCall Elementary School to just make those kids' Christmas a little bit brighter. Also, Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Barone and myself attended the North Fifth Brewery Grand Opening on Friday, which is pretty amazing, so I would urge all of you to please stop by and see the great work that they are doing and how they are adding to just bringing outside-the-box type businesses to North Las Vegas. And lastly, a mutual friend of mine contacted me because the USA Luge Slider Organization wanted a place to do their trials because they're looking for a future Olympian, I can't even say that word, losers, I guess. And so I reached out to Cass, and you know, staff was able to put some routes together, and they chose Revere and Brooks right off of Cheyenne, just because of the slope, and so I'm just happy to announce that they did do it over the weekend. They were so impressed with how the city received them. The setup was there, they just had to come and put up their equipment, and then they were off for the day. And by the way, if we need some bribery tools for Cass or for Councilman Black or myself, we all tried it. So we have videos of us going down the hill, and I think I'm the only one who stayed on course, just saying, but we had such a blast out there doing it, and it's just so good for the community. They want to make it an annual thing here in North Las Vegas. So thank you so much, Cass.
I just have to ask, people fell off those loose things?
It's kind of hard to fall off of it. The hardest thing is when you get toward the end, because you're going so fast, just the stopping, and there's no brakes. You steer, and then I had on, okay, I had on my Ugg boots, so I'm just like, I'm not going to run the traction off my shoes. I didn't have on sneakers, so it was hard to stop because you just put your feet on the pavement and they just kind of ground in that way. But you have to steer with your feet and your head, so that's the hardest part.
So you stayed on?
We all stayed on, but like in between the cones, they did not, I did.
I almost hit two cones.
Yeah.
You know, I took Pam fishing one time.
And he didn't catch a thing. I did.
And I didn't catch a fish, neither her husband, but Pam always wins. She caught a big old fish that day.
Girl power.
Don't ever compete with Pam. That's what I'm trying to tell you. Thank you, Council. Moving on to public forum, this time satisfied to comment on posted agenda items. The public forum excludes discussion of public hearing items that will be heard later and separately. So if you want to speak on any item listed under consent agenda, business, or ordinance final action, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards on posted agenda items for anybody in the audience?
No, sir, we do not.
We don't? Anybody would like to come up at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum. Moving on to the agenda.
Item one, approve regular council, approve city council regular meeting agenda for December 15, 2021. Mayor and council, it's our recommendation to approve the agenda as published.
Thank you, Council. If there's no comments or questions, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve as published.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
I accidentally hit no, but I meant yes.
Items approved. Moving on to consent agenda.
Mayor and council, the consent agenda consists of items 2 through 18. It's our recommendation that the consent agenda be approved as published.
Thank you. If there's no comments or questions, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Items approved. Please cast your vote. Items approved. On the item of set future public hearing dates, Madam City Clerk, I so direct you to set any hearing dates as necessary.
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, moving on to public hearings.
Mayor, council, item 20, approve AMP 162021, Darrell and Commerce for applicant Cavinson Holmes to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation from neighborhood commercial to single-family medium located at the northwest corner of Commerce Street and Darrell Lane.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time. Mr. Gronauer, are you coming forth on this item?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing the applicant to see if you have any questions. Staff and planning commission have recommended approval.
And I want to thank Mr. Gronauer for loaning me his sweater.
Thank you.
True story.
I think we're not going to prove this. I think the city manager is still mad. So, well, thank you very much. Does anybody like, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anybody like to come from the audience to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman, or Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm very familiar with the area over here, far from where I live, and I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve AMP 162021.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor, council, item 21, approve CN 242021 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3099 in ordinance related to zoning reclassifying approximately 4.5 plus or minus acres from the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to PUD PAD Plan Unit Development District, Planned Infield Development District, CN 242021, Darrell and Commerce for 30-unit two-family residential development and an existing multi-tower telecommunications facility for property located at the northwest corner of Darrell Lane and Commerce Street and providing for other matters of property related thereto.
Thank you, Director Jordan. Mr. Jordan, are you here for this item also?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm here to answer any questions. For the record, Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing Todd Stranton with Cavinson Homes, and we appreciate staff's recommendations for approval for the project and development that's before you.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody here from the public would like to discuss item number 21 with us? Seeing no one coming forth and no blue cards, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, on that cell tower there, again, that's very close to where I live, is anything going to be done with that cell tower to make it look like, other than a cell tower?
No, as part of our agreement, we're coming in to purchase the property. We had to cut that out as part of the plan unit development. That is up between the property owner and the cell tower carriers. So to my knowledge, nothing to date is going to be done.
Okay. All right, well, then as far as that goes, item 21, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve, to approve CN 242021.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, item 22, approve CN 232021 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3098 in ordinance related to zoning reclassifying approximately 39.97 plus or minus acres from the PCD Plan Community Development District to PSP PCD Public Facility Plan Community Development District, CN 232021, Tulley Springs for a police substation and regional park for property located at the northwest corner of Deer Springs Way and Revere Street and providing for other matters of property related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Gronauer.
Again, Your Honor, members of the council, Bob Gronauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. On this matter, I'm representing the master developer for Tulley Springs. This is rezoning of the park property there for the regional park. This is for the Police Area Command property, which is five acres apart of the 40-acre regional park that we are actually in construction with Phase 1 or under construction for Phase 1 out there.
Thank you. Councilman Churchill, do you have questions on this?
No, I just wanted to, do you want to say something?
Well, I'm just curious timeframe, some of the activity levels that'll take place with the substation and the park, and you know, when we're foreseeing those actually become potentially available to be used.
Yes, currently, we are fine-tuning our plans with your staff for the Police Area Command Center itself. So as soon as we get some of those loose ends tied up, we'll start the building process for the construction itself to commence on that. The park is under construction. I don't know the exact timeline for that, but that's for Phase 1 of the facility itself. But those should be coming online sometime next year, and I would take, the command center would probably take a little bit longer than 2022. It should be 2023 somewhere.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the council? If not, I'll turn it over to Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a very good question. You know, I pass there quite often along the You know, I pass there quite often along Deer Springs to get to the library and of course Aliante Parkway. And I see that they're doing an awful lot of grading. And it was just before council meeting today that I had an opportunity to see what the final products will look like. And I'm really, really very excited about having that regional park up there. I get an awful lot of emails wanting to know from the people that are moving into the villages up there in the surrounding area, that with all of the new development, are we going to have another park? Or, you know, as far as having a police station there and other amenities? Well, this is an example of exactly what we've worked out with the developer over there. So I'm looking forward to that as well. Appreciate the hard work, but if you could keep us in the loop when, as we get closer than that. But I know that they're grading like crazy out there. So with that, Mayor, I'll go ahead and take item 22 and make a motion to approve ZN dash 23 dash 2021.
Thank you, we have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you, and Your Honor, members of the Council and with your staff, I wish you all a happy holiday season. Thank you for your service, and hopefully, God willing, we all see each other next year, in your next hearing. Thank you.
Why don't you call us from Hawaii when you're over there, Bobby? Have a safe trip.
I will take your call, okay?
Yes, have a safe trip.
I always take your call.
You work very hard, you deserve to get some time with your family.
Thank you.
Moving on to business.
Item number 23, sorry, I have a head, I don't even know what 23 is. 23, discussion interaction regarding performance review of City Attorney Michaela Moore.
Thank you. So two weeks ago, we had the ability and the time to talk to our city manager and our city attorney about their contracts and what we thought and how they did last year and what benefit they bring to the city. And so we finalized that contract, and then Councilman Black wanted to maybe bring up a discussion, recognizing what's happening within the rest of the community here, and to bring this forward. So I want to turn this over to Councilman Black right now.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. As the mayor stated two weeks ago, we received presentations from our city attorney and our city manager, kind of giving us a snapshot overview of the efforts that have been put forward citywide, in this particular case with item number 23, in our city attorney's department, both on the civil and criminal side, the really, the high caliber of team that we have. And, you know, it's a small team, but it does a tremendous amount of work. And when I was making my comment, I stated that I thought it would be worthwhile to bring up for consideration, along with the review and the considered contract approval would be an additional one-time compensation, and that would do a few things. One point I'd like to make first, though, is as I thought back on the presentation that Michaela made, the one thing that really stuck out to me is the investment that we've made deliberately in our care court and the extra work and bandwidth required from your limited staff to bring that to fruition. That's just one of many things where I think we've done really well to serve and invest in our community. And so the concept that I was contemplating or sending out for consideration was to do three things. One, recognizing a job well done, work that has been expended under the leadership of Michaela Moore in our city attorney's office has been, I think, phenomenal, and you heard that two weeks ago. Secondly, when you have someone who's talented or people who are talented, like we have here at the City of North Las Vegas, you want to do everything you can to create an environment where you retain that individual, and financial compensation is part of that. And then also, bear in mind, both Michaela and our city manager last year didn't take any, or didn't receive any additional financial compensation for the work that they performed. So in that vein, my thought was to bring forward a number of $15,000 to achieve those three objectives, which is job well done, retaining good talent so we can keep our team together, and also helping them catch up on the financial side of things that they didn't receive last time.
Thank you. So, Council, I'm going to open this up for conversation right now to follow up on his kind of sunset of a motion. So does anybody here want to add anything to this? Ms. Guinz Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with my colleague here, and just to put a price tag on these kind of things is, it's difficult, because how can you ever pay somebody their worth when you see the work that they do day in and day out? Just rewarding them is just never enough. But I think this is deserving of our city attorney, just with the briefings that we received, the transparency from the office, and your fellow colleagues on your floor are as good as their leader. And I think you demonstrate excellence as a leader, both as a mentor, as a trainer, and able to put out the information. And I can imagine what you go through every evening and your staff, the amount of paperwork that they have to read through and make decisions on, and sometimes, and, you know, there's not a lot of time to make those decisions. So I do appreciate that, and I can totally 100% agree with my colleague.
Thank you very much. No more comments or questions? Councilman Bron?
I was going to say, just whatever I said last time, I think it's on record. I said a lot, I don't want to drag this thing out. I do think we had the best city manager and the best city attorney. And between the two of them, they managed to really recruit a really extraordinary management team. So again, I don't want to go ahead and go, try to remember what I said last time, but I think that says enough.
Thank you very much. So, Councilman, with that, do you want to?
Sure, I'll formalize it into a motion. And in terms of the contemplated dollar amount, you know, Pam or Councilman Guinz Brown is right, really, you know, what is it tied to? Really, it's a number that just, like I said, achieves those three things. From what I understand, in our region, another high-level executive in another municipal government, I think, received $30,000. So really, at the end of the day, it's the intent of the dollar amount more than the dollar amount. But my motion would be to give our city attorney, Michaela Moore, a one-time bonus of $15,000 for those reasons that I have noted. That's my motion.
So that'd be for, by the end of the year, right? Just check and go?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir.
So we have a motion, and we have some people very excited about it. I also agree, so we have a motion. Scott, please. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Congratulations, Ms. Moore.
Item 24, discussion interaction regarding performance review of city manager Ryan Juden.
Thank you. And so at this time, what we do is, we have, the city council has two employees. We have the city manager and the city attorney, and everybody else in the organization works somehow through them and through the directors there. So this also, you brought up about the city manager also, and I wanted to give you a chance to talk about that one, Scott.
Sure. You know, it really, the same principle applies in this case as well, a situation where we have a city leader with a large team, working under unique and unprecedented circumstances over the last almost two years now. I think, you know, Ryan had a, or Mr. Juden had a PowerPoint two weeks ago that illustrated, and certainly, we all know, and it was stated very clearly, that he does this with his team. His team is a fantastic group of individuals with great talent that achieve these goals and accomplishments that were outlined in the PowerPoint. I think that based on the leadership of Mr. Juden, you know, our city has been successful through the pandemic. We've been very responsive to the needs of the community. We've been very innovative with the programs that we've developed and the use of the federal dollars. I think we've been very judicious and deliberate about how we use those resources, and it was because of the, I think, the leadership style and approach of Ryan. He's a regionally respected individual, and by virtue of that, our city is as well. And so the same three principles apply, in my opinion, for a job well done, for an effort to retain good talent and leadership that we have in place, and to also, for lack of a better word, catch up for, you know, last year where there wasn't an additional financial compensation. So that same thing applies. And the same, in my opinion, and of course, and I'm just one of five people on this committee, but the same dollar amount is.
Same dollar, $18,000?
Yes, sir.
So that's, Chair will open up to the Council right now. Anybody in the Council would like to speak on this item?
I can just second that same comment, and I'd just like to add, just the level of conversations that are offered to us through you on issues that require a more in-depth explanation and reasoning behind that. I think you demonstrate that you are able to take that information, decipher it, you know, break it down, detailed information, and then you relay it to us, and we're able to make informed decisions that are best for the city. And to me, that takes a special person to be able to do that, and still read five books a night, stay up and text at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. I'm like, do you sleep? So those kind of things are just extremely important, and that just demonstrates great leadership to me. So thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman?
Again, I think the city's blessed to have the best city manager it's ever had. So again, an outstanding team. I just, just look at this, you know, I mean, we have, you hired someone to be an interim, right? And you found a person who turns out as a pretty good person, you know, and that's just one small example, and she's literally sitting right in front of me. And that's the kind of people that you tend to attract. So we get you, we get the whole team. I think that's pretty much, I think it's very much, we get, how should I say, a complete package.
Thank you. Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I wasn't going to say anything, but it looks like I'm the only one not speaking, and it may get the sense that I'm not in support of it, but of course, it's definitely not the case. Unfortunately, people from the outside looking in, they see us once every two weeks, and they see the backs of these people over here. But I could tell you that during that timeframe in between, these people are working very, very hard. And that's just factual. I don't think you could put a dollar figure on what they've been doing for the city. We see it here, we live it, we know it, and their guidance to allow us to make good decisions is immeasurable. So with that, of course, I agree. Thank you, Mayor.
And I'm going to add a little bit to it for both of you, because I want to do it together. I've often said, if you show me any good organization, any school, any Boy Scout troop, any church, or anything that's working efficiently and effectively, I'll show you good leadership. Our city has worked very efficiently and very effectively, all the way down the line here with our directors and everybody. We have great leadership at every level. I'm very proud of it. The whole team that you guys have put together, you have built a business within our business so the Council doesn't have to do a lot of the heavy lifting. You guys run the business like a business, and you get back and report. All your directors are fantastic. And so we have great leadership with you two. We have great leadership with your directors and these people that you have out in the field. You wholeheartedly both agree, I agree, that you both deserve this raise, and we expect you to keep these high values and high morals and high goals up so that North Las Vegas residents can still continue to thrive in whatever environment we have, and we appreciate all that you did last year. So I also, Scott, would follow through with that there. So Councilman Black has given us a motion.
So the motion, Mayor Lee, is to offer a one-time cash bonus of $15,000 to our city manager, Ryan Juden.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item number 25, receive annual audit report of the fiscal year in June 30, 2021, and approve management correction, corrective action plan in response to the scheduled findings and questioned costs.
Thank you. Director Hardy, how are you doing this evening?
I'm doing well, Mayor. Mayor, members of Council, City Finance Director Will Hardy, for the record, just want to take a minute to introduce our guest. We have Tom Donahue from BDO. He is the partner that oversaw the audit this year. It's been a pleasure to work with him and his team. I'm pleased to report that we finished the audit in a timely manner. It was signed and completed yesterday, and I'm very pleased with our team and the progress that we've been able to make. Tom is a Las Vegas native who has 25 years of experience in his field, and I'll go ahead and turn the time over for him. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you for that kind introduction.
Now, this will depend on what high school you went to, how much we value what you say. You did go to Rancho, right?
I didn't go to Rancho.
Oh, my gosh, we trust this guy. We trust him.
I went to Western.
Western?
Yeah.
Oh, man. We're going to give you the benefit of the doubt. You would have went to Rancho if you could have, that's where we're from.
Yeah, debatable. But anyways, again, thanks for having me, and again, thanks, Will, for the introduction. Oh, sure. Is that better? Okay. I'm not as old as Will. I'm here to brief Council on the results of the audit, freshly completed financial statement audit that just wrapped up yesterday. We just issued our report. This shouldn't take very long. It's going to be a high-level brief, I believe. Council's been provided the wrap-up audit, wrap-up, easy for me to say, documentation. So hopefully, happy to take any questions at the conclusion of my presentation here. For the record, my name's Tom Donahue, I'm an audit partner with BDO, and I guess that's all I need to say about that. So the status of the audit, we're done. We issued an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. Unmodified is a good thing in this context. All records were freely made available to us that we requested. There was no information that we requested that was withheld. Management's cooperation was excellent during the audit. In terms of the significant areas of the audit, there's some estimates that are inherent in the city's financial statements, and where there's estimates, there's a lot of audit work and risk involved in those areas. Those three main areas are the fair value measurements that are inherent in the city's financial statements, liabilities related to self-insurance, and liabilities related to pension and other post-employment benefits. And all three of those areas were encompassed in the scope of our audit. On pages, I don't know if anybody has in front of them, but on pages nine through 11 of our documentation, there's a listing of adjustments. So the audit identified seven audit adjustments, four of which were posted, three of which were passed and will be posted in FY '21. To internal control over financial reporting, that's on pages, I believe, 12, beginning on page 12 through 14 of the wrap-up documentation. Some definitions in there, and I know this is dry, I apologize. It's accounting, what can I say? On pages 13 and 14, you'll see that there was one, that pretty much all of the audit adjustments were kind of traced back to a root cause of a weakness in internal control over financial reporting, specifically the year-end financial reporting closed process. Some one-time kind of external transactions that are reported, really, you know, kind of one-off transactions, were kind of the root cause of the adjustments. So that's in there. And then on pages, if I can find it here, page 16, if I can see, I guess I need glasses here. There's some standard required communications that auditors are required to communicate to governance courts such as yourselves. These communications are all pretty standard, and there's no peculiar or non-standard representations or communications in there. I'm required to reaffirm our firm's independence with respect to the city, and that enables us to conduct the audit objectively. And that's pretty much it. I ran through it extremely fast. I don't know if anybody's had any chances to read through it and have any questions. But before I conclude, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Will, Jessica, and Debbie for their help during the audit. Their cooperation was excellent, and the audit wouldn't have got done without their help, so.
Thank you. So in the general accepted accounting practices realm, we used to have Ralph Pierce, he would come and say, you don't have enough employees, you don't have this, you know, it's kind of an executive summary. Do you have anything on that executive summary that you see as an issue with the city and the way that we're handling our finances?
No, I think, I would, based on what I've heard, this is the smoothest the audits went, probably in recent memory. I'm much younger and shorter than Ralph, but I didn't see anything during the audit that would be worthy of presenting that to you or to the management team. I think that's a testament to the management team and the team they've built, so.
So that's clean bill of health, then?
Clean bill of health.
So the city doesn't have a lot of money, but would you put something in Director Hardy's Christmas bonus, because we gave all the money we had to these two right here? But he did a good job.
Maybe if he was wearing a sweater like Ryan's here, he'd give a little something in his stockings.
Thank you. No, recognizing that you're paid to make sure that there are no deficiencies or issues, and recognizing that you seem to think that finance is doing a great, you know, a great department, doing a great service, that's what we really need to pay you to tell us. So we appreciate that so much. to, to pay you to tell us. So, we appreciate that so much. I'm going to ask the council if they have any questions. Council, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion.
To make the motion to approve?
We have a motion to, to approve the collective corrective audit action plan. There we go. Items approved. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Will, good job. Take care.
Happy holidays.
You too, brother.
Thank you, Mayor. Just on that last item, I did want to, I don't think any of us thought that we would maybe see that. I can remember in the, the early days when it seemed like every other day there was another something that was being found, not even by auditors, just by the team when they came in here. And this is a testament to Will, Debbie, Jessica, just all that they're, they're doing, that entire department. It's, it really is, I know Darren would say it's a, it's a miracle. I, I wouldn't completely disagree with that, but it's also a lot of, of hard work by Will and Debbie and Jessica and their team and all that they, that they do on a daily basis. It is tremendous. It's what they've done in, in having, you know, we went from seven significant findings to three findings to, you know, we just, it's been going down like this to where we get that clean bill of health. It's so astonishing to, to people that know this stuff, that that's the reason that we've had financial experts from Chicago and New York come on site to visit to kind of figure out how is it that, that this was able to be accomplished? And it's just, it is really incredible. I know it was just a quick item and a quick report, but I would have, I wouldn't have bet, I'm not a betting guy. I would do like a bet a pancake breakfast every once in a while or something, and I would have never bet a pancake breakfast that we would have had a report like that in that quick of time. So, it really is very amazing. I don't think it's talked about as much. It, it's tremendous what they've done and where the city's finances are today versus where they were eight years ago.
Well, I appreciate that. And I'll add something on to the council, too. This city has raised itself to the strongest city in this state, and we are diversifying the economy here, and we're doing a great job. But I'll tell you, the most significant thing to me is we didn't raise water rates, we didn't raise fees, we didn't try to raise taxes. We work within the budgets. As a council, you guys have done a fantastic job as being municipal leaders and a great staff that identified things we should do and gave us advice, and city manager, city attorney, holding back on things that we couldn't afford, and how we hired people, Dale and all the directors. This is a, a whole city success. So, I appreciate you guys for making North Las Vegas so physically sound as it is today. Thank you very much. So, did we, you saved the present?
Yeah, item number 26. Receive presentation by Roanne Triana, Regional One Superintendent regarding the quarterly report for the Clark County School District.
Welcome, Ms. Triana, if I'm saying that right. Sounds like it.
Yes, sir. Mayor Lee, Las Vegas High School, class of 89. I know, right? All right. I think we have a little handout. Did we hand it out? Not today. Just a little.
You'll have to speak up just a little.
Just a tiny handout. Okay. Mayor Lee, council members, thank you for inviting me here tonight. My name is Roanne Triana, Region One Superintendent of the Clark County School District. Tonight, I'd like to share a few updates and celebrations regarding the work being done in our schools in the city of North Las Vegas. As you know, the last six weeks have been very challenging in terms of the uncertainty of the district's future leadership, and I'm happy to report that we have a superintendent. We're excited to continue, to continue the work outlined in the district's strategic plan, Focus 2024, under Dr. Jarrah's leadership. Next, I'm happy to announce that we have not had a school closure in North Las Vegas to date, and have been able to successfully keep our doors open due to following COVID mitigation strategies. And I'd like to give a huge thank you to our students, to our families, to our community-building leaders, and school staff members for everyone's cooperation and flexibility in navigating our new normal. As we're closing out this semester, our student winter benchmark assessment data closes this Friday. And so, at this time, I'd like to share just a little bit about the work being done to support our schools in terms of improving student outcomes and addressing the unfinished learning due to COVID-19 and other systemic historical issues that have had an impact on our students' learning. Just a brief, high-level overview of the differentiated school support framework that tightly aligns with the district's strategic plan, Focus 2024. The framework targets improving student achievement, reducing achievement gaps, promoting access and equity to high-quality instruction, and implementing systems and structures for safety and engagement. In addition, the differentiated school support framework includes professional learning and systems and support to build capacity with our educators. This is transformational work, and it's the right work, investing in our people to improve outcomes for our students. The overarching components of the differentiated school support framework includes improving student achievement. Students are at the center of our work, and the most important place in the Clark County School District is in the classroom. The work is continuous as we work with schools to develop action steps, and as these action steps are accomplished, we will take the plan to the next level, and we will continue to monitor the progress. Differentiated supports and services are integrated with a level of accountability for schools, region leadership, and myself. In addition, we're building a common language around school improvement to sustain the work and build capacity. In order to focus our work, we're utilizing Leverage Leadership 2.0 by Paul Brambeck Santoio, where he outlines the instructional and cultural levers that are essential for school improvement. These include data-driven instruction and assessment, instructional planning, observation feedback, and professional learning. The cultural levers include student culture, staff culture, and school leadership. The super levers include data-driven instruction and student culture, and this is really where we've centered our work since the fall with our schools, as data and culture must take priority in improving student achievement throughout all of our schools. Next, I'd like to give a quick update regarding SR3 funding. I spoke a little bit about that the last time I was here. The grant was submitted in November last month by the appropriate deadline. Final approval has not yet been provided by the Nevada Department of Education or the federal government, but NDOE made commendations regarding the Clark County School District's process to include the community and the use of funds plan. The Clark County School District has adopted and is providing Tier One mathematics curriculum, K-12, and also professional learning associated with that. Having a common curriculum aligned to standards is critical in ensuring that all of our educators have access to standard-aligned materials. It's also helpful in schools with high transparency rates. This helps to ensure that all of our students have access to the same high-quality teaching and learning, no matter what their zip code is. Clark County School District Faces Department is working with parental digital literacy programming to support families in the new digital world. This support helps our parents better understand the use of Chromebooks and the different digital interfaces required for online learning, such as Infinite Campus and Canvas, as two examples that are very popular. Human Resources has developed and partnered with UNLV to create teacher pipelines. This will help us grow our own, so to speak, in the midst of a national teacher shortage. This also includes creating a pathway for support staff members to become licensed teachers. This spring, grants for educational partnerships, tutoring after-school, before-school programs will be forthcoming, so educational partners can increase their presence and positively impact student achievement and social-emotional support. And finally, I'd like to share about some of the wonderful events that have been happening in our schools. Recently, we were able to have a town hall at one of our high schools here in North Las Vegas. Students, police officers, and mental health experts were able to discuss their experiences, their concerns, their ideas, and potential solutions in response to student safety concerns. The time was meaningful and productive, and we look forward to having more of these throughout the city. Currently, our schools are closing out the semester by celebrating our students with different award ceremonies, recognitions, celebrations, assemblies, and winter concerts. This week, many of our schools, like many of you, wearing your beautiful sweaters. Many of our schools are engaged in Spirit Week, in which each day is a different winter theme, and students and staff are dressed up, doing fun activities to build school spirit and spread some much-needed holiday cheer. So, with that, that concludes my quarterly update. And with that, I'd like to take any questions or concerns.
Thank you. I'm going to open up to the council. Any comments or questions from anyone in the council at this time? Councilmember Ron?
It's really good to see you. I, I hope your hubby's doing well. Please extend, of course, my warmest wishes.
And he says, "Tell Barone I said hello." He didn't say, "Good luck tonight." He said, "He focused on you."
Fantastic. I'm just wondering, how, how has it been going with recruitment for, I guess, replacement teachers and, and of course, substitutes? I, I ask because, of course, you know, I think not just our, on our job, not just in our school, but I think in general across the country.
Yep.
We've had professionals leave the, leave the profession. Not as many as our, our friends there who are first responders and, and nurses, but I know at Rancho, I think we lost like five or six at the beginning of the school year. And, you know, all of us have had to take it with slack. How are we going with efforts to recruit new teachers and/or subs?
You know, I think they're doing everything possible at the time. You know, and I shout out to the schools being very creative, but I know that the teachers are getting tired, selling preps and things like that. And so, you know, we're combining classes, we're trying to do everything we can, obviously, you know, to keep our schools open, and it is all hands on deck. You all saw the news story of the principal cleaning the cafeteria, covering classes, and I will tell you that I did the very same thing when the schools first opened. We are very short, but every effort is being made by our human resource office to recruit and intensify those efforts, and we'll stay up that work.
I did hear something, this is just a little something that I, I caught a blurb on. I, I guess that the, the central office is, is going to be taking up zone variances, you know. I guess right now, the way it works is, of course, if a child who is not zoned for your school, they can get a variance to go in an, in a short application, of course, to the principal, which, of course, they, in which they explain, you know, why the, the kid might be going. It could be something very simple that the older brother goes to, say, Rancho High School or to J.D. Smith, and it makes it a little bit easier for, you know, like the other kid to, to tag along, or maybe a cousin, it might kind of help out to get them there. Is it true that there'll be actually a new central office that, that will be, actually be handling all those variance applications?
Yes. It's going to be handled centrally, and it's called change of school assignment. And more information's going to be coming out on that very soon.
I, I, I just, at Rancho, of course, you know, there, I'm, I'm just a, an employee and Indian. I, I follow whatever they say. But over here, of course, you know, I, I hear something like that, and I, I just, I, I kind of think that's an example of something, I'll just say it like this. That sounds to me like it's an answer looking for a question. I, I think, you know, I have a fantastic principal at Rancho High School, and most of principals that I, that I know, they're simply very sensible people who, at the site, can probably make a, a decision on whether they can take another child or two. I mean, they do know intimately well just how many kids are enrolled at their school. And just, these things, of course, are always very expensive, and I'm just thinking that might be a few hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money that might be better spent somewhere else. That's just an opinion, but of course, you know.
Yeah. And so, what's happening with that is we've got schools that have an abundance of zone variance kids coming in, and that requires us to place portables and other funds to those sites where those kids are not zoned. So, with this, you know, being more centralized, because we, up until this point in time, we had no tracking on what zone variances were approved, which weren't, because it was housed at each school. And if a school has open seats, you know, they can look at that and take kids in as well if they have space. But what we're having is we have schools with a lot of space, and then we have schools that are overcrowded because of zone variances. So, we're trying to balance that out and make the best use of the money to not have to have portables at one school where this school has an entire building and only 200 kids there.
I, I get it. It's just, you know, again, I, I have, I respect all the principals that I've worked under, and I do know that if we leave them to make decisions, you know, I mean, again, they're big boys and girls. I think they could probably decide, you know, what would be an appropriate load of children for their school. They could always refuse, of course, a, and if, Rancho High School, we're at 3,300, and I'm, I'm pretty sure the boss, if she got 50 or 60 zone variances, I'm sure she would have enough sense to refuse them if she, if she thought, you know, we're like acapacity or a little above. But again, those are just my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Triana, I just want to ask you a couple of questions, but I, I know, I recognize that you are not the leader of the Clark County School District, and you're here today doing your responsible job. Last time we had a representation, we, at the school, as you know, we, we don't want to air a lot of dirty laundry here. We want to get together. Everybody has different schools, different issues, different challenges. But when we asked that you or whoever was responsible for this would come in to see the council itself individually, I think we were told that you had no time for that. Is that correct?
The focus of my time has to be in schools, so they want me spending 90% of my time in schools, working shoulder-to-shoulder with principals.
So, this is, this is somewhat a waste of a time to you?
No, not at all. I'm just saying I'm one under authority.
Yeah. But now, the reason I say that is I was, I served in the legislature 14 years, and I had to kind of follow some of the things that they say, even though I, some of us don't agree, but I recognize that, you know, the state has Assemblymen and Senators who see education at a different level than I do, and I'm, I'm good with that. And then I know that, I think when I was up there, I don't remember, but the principals were going to be, becoming more autonomous. They were going to be able to run their own little businesses among themselves. But yet, watching the legislature and watching leadership here, it looks like you guys are clawing back to where it was before, which means that we don't really care. I, I don't know what you're writing, but would you look at me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Because what I'm saying isn't need to be.
Oh, no.
It's just between us. I don't think that we want to claw back and be, see the legislature disrespected either. And so, what I see happening with the, the trustees and maybe senior staff at the city, you guys are saying, we don't care what the legislature mandated or directed us to do. We're the Clark County School District. We're bigger than you guys. We'll do what we want and not follow the rules. Is that kind of what it sounds like I'm hearing?
I think the effort is to maximize efficiencies. They're looking at different things for the rural schools, because they have different needs when it comes to budget and landscaping and things like that. So, I don't perceive it that way, no.
So, they're looking at it and saying, we're going to budget our time. You know, we, we have mandates. We have to give the local government oversight committee stuff that looks at us, and we have to do reports, and we have to send in reports like the financials does, but we're kind of busy over here, too. We don't really give a crap what the legislature says, so maybe we won't do that either. Is that, is that what we should do as cities? Because that's what generally is happening here. I'm not blaming you. You're not in that position, but somewhere along the line, the role of government is to oversee and to direct, and you guys are basically saying, we'll oversee, we'll overdirect, trust us, but we really don't care what you guys as constituents and parents think. Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Then tell me, then tell me what I'm hearing, then.
So, I think, like I said before, it goes back to maximizing efficiencies, you know, with transportation, food service, things like that. I don't know if that's what you're referring to.
No, I just want to know why you don't have to follow state law, and I do. And you can't answer that question. It's not directed at you, okay? You are, but we do, we would like to see better service, and we would like to see you follow the state law when it comes to your reporting to the city council. If Councilman Black needs to see somebody, it should be you, you know? If we don't need to see you, then we won't bother you.
I will definitely take that back.
So, does anybody have any, any concerns or questions that I can bring up at this time? Just understand the message. The message is not clear enough to me that you're following state law.
Got it.
Okay. So, with that, I don't know what we accomplished tonight, but you did your reporting, and you can go back to your job now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinances introduction only.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Introduction to ordinance number 3094, an ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, to include within annex to and make part of said certain specifically described territory adjoining and contiguous to corporate limits of said city. Declaring said territory and the inhabitants thereof to be annexed to said city and subject to all debts, laws, ordinances, and regulations in force in said city, offering a map or plat of said described territory to be recorded in the office of the county recorder of the county of Clark, State of Nevada, and providing other matters relating thereto for possible action.
You want to read the next one, too?
Sure. Item number 28, introduce ordinance number 3096, an ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, to include within annex to and make a part said certain, Sid City certain specifically described territory adjoining and contiguous to corporate limits of said city. Declaring said territory and the inhabitants thereof to be annexed to said city and subject to all debts, laws, ordinance, and regulations in force in said city. Offering a map or plat said described territory to be recorded in the office of the county recorder of the county of Clark, State of Nevada, and providing other matters relating thereto.
Item number 29, introduce ordinance 3104, menning chapter 2.68.105, the North Las Vegas Municipal Code by menning's subsection F1, modified entry minimum requirements.
Thank you for those introductions only. Now moving on to appointments.
Item number 30, appointment of a council member to the Nevada League of Cities for a term, co-terminist to that of the appointed member.
Thank you. We pulled out of the League of Cities, I think, eight years ago, seven, eight, six, eight years ago, because of the financial situation we were in. And over a period of time, we would lobby for ourselves, but we're finding out that the League of Cities is actually bringing on a better service in it than we had thought possible, that we could afford. And so we have rejoined the Nevada League of Cities. So every city in Nevada now is a member of this, I'll say, powerful committee. And it's powerful because it works with the legislature to make sure that our views are represented and our constituents' views are represented. So at this time, after getting that opportunity to join again, we have someone that we could appoint to be a member of that governing board. And so at this point in time, I'd like to call for motion to adopt Councilman Black to fill that position until it comes back up again. So would you accept that?
Yes, I will.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate you, and plus, all the work you do on the Southern Nevada Health Department and your other committees you're on. This is an easier committee, but I think it's going to be a very good opportunity for you. So I appreciate you. So that's my motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 31, appointment to the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada Bus Shelter and Bench Advisory Committee as a citizen member to fill the remainder of a one-year term ending November 1st, 2022.
Thank you. We had someone who was on this committee who moved, and so we found someone else that would love to serve on this committee, and he filled out the proper paperwork, was qualified. So we'd like to call, I'd like to call for a motion to appoint David Johnson to sit on the Regional Transportation Commission for the Southern Nevada Bus Shelter and Bus and Bench Advisory Committee. That'd be the motion. Items approved. Moving on to city manager's report.
Mayor and council, I have nothing to report at this time, other than, since this is the last meeting we have before the holidays, just to wish everyone a very safe holiday season. Hope they enjoy it with their families, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I will add something to your report before I close it. You handed me a piece of paper, and I think Director Hardy worked very hard on this. It has now been verified that North Las Vegas has 275,733 people living. That's the population of our city. The next one that we were neck and neck with for a while was Reno, and they're at 268,447. But I've talked to the county leader up there, Bob Lucy, and he assures me that Reno is still growing, they're a strong vibrant community, and if North Las Vegas slows down one little bit, they're going to catch us. So we're glad to have the moniker, the third largest city in Nevada, but we'd have to get to 330,000 to beat Henderson. We're not racing anybody, but we are proud of our constituents and the growth and the success North Las Vegas has. So I just want to throw that, Ryan, you brought it into me, I just want to, you know, let everyone know that the Washoe growth has slowed down just a little bit, or we've sped up, but we have great friends in Reno. Moving on to the second public forum. Now is a time for the public speak on issues that are not on the agenda tonight, but are within the jurisdiction or control of the city council. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember, no items raised during the second forum may deliberate or act upon by the city. However, the items discussed may be referred to the city manager or city staff for action by the city council later date. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
We do not. And at this time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to come up and address the city on any items? Seeing none, we will close the public forum, and this meeting is adjourned.